Welcome, everybody. We didn't think we'd have anybody here. We were like, we'll just hammer through and get this done, but I'm happy to see everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 16, 2024 Board of Education meeting. We have all trustees present. We excused our student representatives and we will, we have two meetings today. The first one will, I think last year was 11 minutes, so we'll see how fast I can go through it this year, and then we'll have our primary meeting. So we always begin by the, saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you if you'd like to stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay, the first part of our meeting is our annual organizational meeting, so it's, we're, as I said, we'll try to move quickly and get through all this. The first thing we have to do is the members of the Board of Education must elect an acting chairperson to officiate the meeting until the election of a president has been completed. I have a resolution, please. Dr. Wilson.
Be it therefore resolved that Carl Schmidt serve as acting chairperson to officiate the meeting until the election of a president has been completed. Support.
Thank you, resolution by Dr. Wilson, supported by who supported? Ms. Alish. Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose say no, thank you. Resolution passes. Now we need to appoint a temporary secretary. It's suggested that we appoint Judy Holmes to act as temporary secretary until such time as the secretary to the Troy Board of Education has been elected. And I don't have a resolution.
No, we just appointed her.
Oh, okay. You consider yourself appointed. How's that? Okay. Okay, now we move into nominations and elections of officers, so we have two steps for each of these. The first is we open to nominations, then we close to nominations, and then we vote. Okay? So nominations are now in order for the office of board president. May I have any nominations, please? Ms. Alish?
I, Amina Alish nominate Carl Schmidt to serve as president of the Troy Board of Education until December 31, 2024.
Support.
Thank you, resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by, I'm going to go with Dr. Wilson because her voice was loud right next to me. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, could I have a resolution? Let's see, someone else?
Close the resolution.
Can I close? Be it therefore resolved that nominations for the office of president of the Troy Board of Education be closed?
Yes.
Correct?
Support.
Okay, we have that. Record it. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose say no, thank you. Okay, now we move to, right, be it therefore resolved, but I need someone else to read that. Okay.
Therefore resolved that Carl Schmidt serve as the president of the Troy Board of Education until December 31, 2024.
Thank you, we need a roll call vote.
Somebody has to support. Support, yes.
I miss who supported, Ms. Alish, okay, thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Ane?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Dr. Philip Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
All right. We have a president, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we need to, we need to declare nominations are in order now for the office of board vice president. Dr. Wilson.
I, Nicole Wilson nominate Patel Ane to serve as vice president of the Troy Board of Education until December 31, 2024.
Support.
Thank you, a resolution by Dr. Wilson, supported by Ms. Alish. Are there any other nominations? Thank you. Be it therefore resolved that nominations for the office of vice president of the Troy Board of Education be closed?
Support.
Was that Ms. Alish again? She's, okay.
She's on it.
I know. Okay. All right, so be it therefore resolved that Patel Ane?
We have to vote on closing the?
Do we have to vote on closing? See, I'm.
They already did, that's okay. It was supposed to be seven, zero.
That's okay, we, I was going to say, we could all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Okay, opposed say no? All right, thank you. And then we some, okay. I'll just read it. Be it therefore resolved that Patel Ane serve as vice president of the Troy Board of Education until December 31, 2024?
Support.
She's supporting everything tonight, all right. Ms. Alish, okay.
Mrs. Ane?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Dr. Philip Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alish?
Yes.
All right, we have a vice president, congratulations. All right. Now we must declare nominations are in order for the office of board secretary. Dr. Wilson.
I, Nicole Wilson nominate Gary Hoff to serve as the secretary of the Troy Board of Education until December 31, 2024.
Support. Clearly, none of us want your job.
That's right. All right, I'm going with Mr. Hoff on that one, okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Are there any other nominations? Okay, be it therefore resolved that nominations for the office of secretary of the Troy Board of Education be closed?
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Amina, yes, and then all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no, thank you. Okay, may I have a resolution then?
Be it therefore resolved that Gary Hoff serve as the secretary of the Troy Board of Education until December 31, 2024.
Support.
I have a resolution by Dr. Wilson, supported by Ms. Alish.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson, or Dr. Philip Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Alish?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, we have a secretary for the year. Okay, now we need appointment of a school board treasurer. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that Rick West, Assistant Superintendent Business Services, be appointed as treasurer of the Troy Board of Education for the period January through December 2024?
Support.
Resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no?
Thank you, good sir.
No one else wants that job, there you go. Congratulations, Mr. West. All right, now we need to, we need consideration to establish fund depositories and investment resolution. The actions need to be taken that will approve the filing resolution on fund depositories and investments. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education adopts the resolution on fund depositories and investments for the period January through December 2024, and that a copy of the attached resolution in its entirety be incorporated as part of the official minutes of the Board of Education.
Support.
Resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Dr. Wilson. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no? Thank you, resolution passes. Oh, do we need to read the, we can just do the attached, we're okay, all right. Okay, now we need to designate board and district legal counsel. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Ane?
Be therefore resolved to continue the designation of Clark Hill PLC, Collins and Blaha PC, Miller Johnson Thrun Law Forum PC, and the Miller Canfield as the legal counsel to advise and/or represent the Troy School District and Board of Education as necessary for the 2024 calendar year. The superintendent is authorized to consult additional counsel as needed with prior notification to the board.
Support.
Resolution by Ms. Ane, supported by Ms. Alish. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no? Thank you, resolution passes. We have attorneys. Now we need a designation of the superintendent to be the deputy secretary. Deputy secretary, may I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved to continue the designation of the superintendent of schools to be deputy secretary of the board with authority to act for the secretary for the 2024 calendar year.
Support.
Resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no? Thank you, resolution passes. You're the deputy secretary, there you go.
Can add that to your resume.
Add that to your resume, that's right. And now the most important function of the entire board, we need a designation of a person for posting notices of meetings, and there's always stiff competition for this job. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the designation of a person for posting notices of meetings for the 2024 calendar year shall be Judy Holmes, Secretary to the Superintendent of Schools.
Support.
A resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Ms. Ane. It's probably going to be close, but let's try the vote. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no? Congratulations, Ms. Holmes. Another year of good posting. Okay, then we need, we need to approve our Board of Education meeting schedule for the 2024 calendar year. May I have a resolution, please? Dr. Philip Hart?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education hereby adopts the schedule of meetings for the 2024 calendar year as indicated on the attached calendar.
Support.
Resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no? Thank you, we have a calendar. Okay, now we need our board committee membership assignments approved for the year, may I have a resolution for that? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education hereby adopts the board committee memberships for the 2024 school year as attached.
Support.
Resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by, I'm going with Mr. Hoff on that one. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no? Thank you. We have our assignments. Woo, we got through it, okay. Anyway, timed me?
Seven minutes? No, no, 11 minutes.
11 minutes, oh, I can't beat the 11 minutes, okay.
It's because we joke too much.
I know, okay, we'll move to, so we have postponed recognition, do you want to kind of talk through and, yeah, would you like to kind of talk about the areas and then we know, we'll have everybody come back in February, correct? For? Yeah.
Absolutely, we have, we had three items of recognition this evening, the first two, well, we're actually going to push all three to February, the first, the TSD mission moment, we're going to recognize our student, superintendent student advisory board, the executive committee members for their work in helping organize the MLK Day of Service yesterday, which was a huge success, even despite the weather, kids did a great job in pulling that together. Special thanks also to Kendra Montante and Linda and Judy, who did a great job of helping, helping pull all that together. So we're going to recognize those students, since we didn't necessarily want them here this evening, we'll ask them to come out next, at our next meeting, we'll recognize them then. But also, we'll push our student spotlight, oh, we're going to recognize a young gentleman who's been doing a lot of work with drone technology and with videos across the district, so we're going to recognize him. But one thing, we are going to do a formal resignation, resignation, excuse me, resolution.
Resolution.
No resignation yet.
Very different thing.
Not yet. For recognition month, for, for the Board of Education, January is Board Recognition Month. So we're going to do that, we'll do the resolution in February, but we did want to share with the board a gift, a small token of our appreciation, a gift for you all, given the weather, we thought you might want this now, and maybe we could sport it in February, not to give away the surprise, but we thought it'd be best just to give it, you know, so this, we're going to do that, and then we'll move on.
Thank you.
One can open and then you'll all be surprised.
Okay, yeah.
Don't look, don't look.
This is yours.
Thanks to Mrs. Holmes for the beautiful wrapping. Oh, yeah. Those are awesome. Oh. Oh, those are great. Given the cold weather, we thought you might want to sport that. Might be putting it on today. Yeah. Will be the envy of everyone at the MASB conference, so. Right, even back. So we're going to perform a resolution in, in February.
That's wonderful, thank you. Okay, that moves us to, I don't think we need a recess.
No.
Are we going to shuffle seats?
No, we'll just go through. additions and deletions?
There are none this evening?
Okay. And then we have one public communication on an agenda item. We have a new handy dandy clock here, so we don't have to interrupt you to tell you when you're getting close, so if you haven't done this before, I have Mr. Jeff Zendler, if you'd like to come on up. Hi, Mr. Zendler. So if you haven't done this before, you have three minutes, and now we'll, you're the first person to have the clock in front of you, but we thought that would be nicer than us interrupting you at the 32nd mark, so thank you for coming tonight.
My name is Jeff Zendler, I currently am in the Troy School District, I'm also a parent of three Athens graduates. My youngest daughter Alexia is now in the third grade at Barnard. Alexia uses a chin-driven power wheelchair to access school, including recess on the Barnard playground. I'm here to express my ongoing and deep concerns with the planning and communication about the bond-funded elementary playground upgrades that have been in progress over the past year. I hope to represent both disabled and non-disabled TSD students and the greater community for which you serve. While advertising to the community for the passage of the bond, TSD made promises of accessible playground equipment and new surfaces with an image showing a playground with a poured-in-place surface and a play structure with a wheelchair ramp access. A year later, I'm concerned, was this an example of false advertising to gain votes for the bond? Your superintendent likes this phrase, "promises made, promises kept," but if you remove all the smoke and mirrors around these issues, you'll see instead evidence of promises made, promises not quite kept. At our Barnard PTO meeting last April, the superintendent and his elementary assistant superintendent promised collaboration with parents and the community through building level playground committees. We were informed at the May PTO meeting of a teacher being assigned to lead the Barnard Committee alongside a predetermined parent representative. After more than a dozen emails on the subject throughout the school year, on my part, my asking for updates and information, volunteering my time in services, and being promised an opportunity to participate in the planning process as part of this committee, I was emailed in May by the business services assistant, just a few weeks before summer break, that the only parent or community collaboration would be through a survey being sent out by the building administrators for efficiency and effectiveness purposes. I'm wondering why the administration backed away from the promised community involvement and collaboration regarding such an important equity issue as accessibility and inclusion with our playgrounds. This pattern of operation does not promote trust between the school district and its families, in short, it's not world-class. Tonight, I'm asking you, the board, to ask the right questions, hold the administration responsible to deliver on what was advertised, and expect accountability for promises made, promises kept. Pause a moment to reflect how you can serve the community that elected you, do your due diligence regarding the playgrounds. Help me speak up for Alexia and other disabled students in the district whose families might not know how to or have time to come here and speak up on this topic. Last month, my wife challenged you. When you know better, you can do better, so I'm asking you again tonight to consider this topic and to do better for the students that need it most, and to continue to ask yourself, do they matter?
Thank you, Mr. Zendler.
Thank you.
Oh, should he go behind?
No, it didn't say.
Oh, okay. Okay, we move to our general consent agenda, our general consent agenda, but not on an agenda item. Our consent, general consent agenda consists of the minutes of the December 5, 2023 special Board of Education meeting, B, the minutes of the December 5, 2023 closed session meeting, C, minutes of the December 5, 2023 Board of Education workshop, D, minutes of the December 12, 2023 Board of Education meeting, and E, the treasurer's report for November of 2023. May I have a resolution? Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, D, and E on the consent agenda.
Support.
A resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Mr. Hoff. Are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed say no? Thank you, resolution passes. All right, and that personnel, we have nothing, is that correct?
No, Mr. Pagel. Yep, we do have one.
Oh, we do have one, oh, okay. I don't have.
We don't have the resolution file, so.
I can read it online if you know what it is.
Hello, Mr. Pagel.
Good evening, Mr. Schmidt, Dr. Macheski, members of the board. I have before you this evening two teacher hires for your consideration, recommended for your consideration. We have been in search of these positions for a number of weeks here, science position at Larson and Bowlin Middle School, and resource room position at Wausa Elementary. It is recommended that the Board of Education approves the issuance of a probationary contract to the following teachers for the 2023-2024 school year, Jennifer Maxwell, 1.0 Science, and Mallory Lyons, 1.0 Resource Room.
Okay, thank you, we're being asked to approve the hiring of two new teachers. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Ane, do you have it in front of you?
Yes, I do. Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education takes action to approve the four-mentioned personnel recommendations as stated above.
Support.
Resolution by Ms. Ane, supported by three of you, I'm going to go with Dr. Philip Hart on this one. All right, are there any questions or comments on this? Go ahead.
So with these two, with these two hires, where are we now in the process?
We are down to one existing special education position at, at Bolin Park, and then we've got one new position at, for, for a social worker special ed due to a recent resignation, so we're, we're.
Keeping you busy. Good, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed say no? Thank you, resolution passes. Welcome to our two new employees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, curriculum?
There is none this evening.
Thank you. That moves us to business with Mr. West. Good evening, Mr. West.
Good evening, a few, few resolutions for your consideration tonight, all of which have been discussed in, thoroughly in the workshop last week. The first one is the flooring replacement and polishing project. ARFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for flooring replacement and polishing work at Barnard, Bemis, Morse, Waddles, Waus, Baker Middle School, and Transportation. Bid responses were reviewed by TSD Operations Department, and it's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below.
All right, thank you, we're being asked to purchase flooring replacement and support the polishing project. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for flooring replacement work be awarded as follows, and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the building site and sinking fund. Shock Bros. floor covering, and that's for flooring demo replacement, in the amount of $494,175. Diamond shine concrete and stone for floor polishing, the amount of $26,000. In additional emergency flooring, the amount of $30,000, for a total amount of $550,175.
Thank you, resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Dr. Wilson. Are there any comments or questions on this? I'm going to assume that Bros. is actually brothers. I somehow be a little nervous, we hired flooring bros to take care of this, so, okay, good. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed say no? Thank you.
Item B. Item B, consideration for playground equipment purchase. Omni consortium pricing quotes were obtained for playground equipment and installation for six TSD elementary schools as part of the district-wide playground renovation project. Quotes were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Maintenance and Operations, and LCPA Landscape Architects. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. So we do have a little bit of additional information regarding process and how we got to this. Ms. Greifer is going to help me. I am attempting to get that screen on. I don't, is this being broadcast tonight?
Yeah.
Well, we'll wait. I'll just talk a bit about, what's up? About process in general. I know we shared this just a bit, and it was late into the evening of our Accountability Plan Workshop. We worked with Marie Woodman, one of our teacher leaders in the Teaching Learning Department, and she spoke a bit about, under our blue pillar, how this is really part of our strategic planning. And so the first step in that process began back last March, where we were able to take the six building leaders and bring them together to start with some learning and make sure we had a committee around that work. We have about 35 staff members that are part of that, that have diverse backgrounds, and making sure that we have all of those, all of that group together again around to do some learning and to think together about some guiding principles that really could act as a framework for the group. One thing I think is really important to the process in general was the amount of feedback that we had actually from students this time, and which was really interesting, that they had through the media department, I know we've shared this along the way at the board, but they were able to provide a, some, some ideas and things like that, through the media, they were able to cultivate protocols and make sure that we were able to look at their feedback, because they're the end user of the playground in general, so that was really, it was just fun to be able to see and hear that group provide feedback. So one of the key pieces we're starting with, and we, you remember this from the preschool work, we had those guiding principles established to really provide the enhancements, this isn't a full review of the playgrounds, but we were able to assess what we had and be able to kind of enhance and do that in an economical way. So I'll just share those briefly with you, I know this is in your cap as well, but really those, those principles the team came up with, that the district should make sure that we have places to be inclusive, places of play, to be as safe and accessible for all, to invoke creativity, inspire curiosity and awe, to enhance connection to nature and to promote mental health. So through a lot of our learning, we incorporated the idea of the outdoors and how important that was to children to have that frequency on a regular basis to be outside and be able to connect with one another. So many of you know that our work through Edward Clapp, our media specialist, have been working with them, and so the kids had, we did some nice videos to share with the community. The other thing that we did was to, we had about 500, 500-plus survey participants from our community members, and so principals were able to take apart what their specific ability, the feedback from their specific ability.
No top shelf content.
I have no idea.
It's not top shelf.
That they were able to kind of.
Media, YouTube, settings, row one, column five, no top shelf content. Search, row one, column one, no top shelf content.
The next time Mr. West has to present, this is what you're going to do.
So we want to put on this live talk or this one?
We can do it here, I just need that.
I, I'm not going to. Straight with the specific Apple TV?
Okay, I can get it, I just, it's going to have to do that noise.
YouTube, settings, row one, general, but notice, access apps, network, button, nine of the connection, Ethernet, connected, button, one of one.
I, I never knew Apple did this.
Status, IP address, 10 dot 103 dot, dot, 13, one of five, subnet mask, 200, receiving their.
Stay here, we're sorry.
Let's take, we're going to take a two-minute recess, you can play with that, and then, oh, did you get it? Oh, okay.
Yep.
It's almost everything we were doing.
All right.
I've never heard of such, okay.
So.
You were saying, yeah.
This is a slide that we had shared during the Accountability Plan Update, and so we And so we were able, we wanted, we thought we were trying to be very intentional about the process instead of just allowing the principals to pick or somebody in central office to pick the items. We were trying to be very intentional again about establishing some guiding principles with a collaborative team, having students be involved in the design, especially because this is playgrounds, to be, be really thoughtful about those guiding principles with our media specialists and their leadership. It was, that part to me was just extraordinary. We have those captured in our team's folder. We were able to see student progress, you know, the student ideas and things. And that was just really exciting. A lot of tools that were requested. And so they were part of our learning design team. The other piece, as I mentioned, just quickly, the feedback from our stakeholders. And then really thinking about ways, as we kind of filter through the process, the principals were able to, to talk specifically, for instance, about Martell, for example, what that looks like at Martell and to go through with their stakeholder groups to think about. Right now, for instance, they're talking about not only their pieces, but the color choices and things like that. Our parent groups have been so incredibly supportive of our, of our playgrounds. And a lot of times when they have big fundraisers and things, they want to provide like a big splash or a piece. And we wanted to make sure we were incorporating those and not just kind of, you know, starting all over. And so principals have been really intentional about those pieces and how they can continue to contribute and add to that process. And then we've even asked as part of the design in the future that they are able to kind of have a menu of options as they kind of look forward as well. As we did that with our media group where they could look at some different packages and things, ways that they can add to this over time. And so I'm just really pleased with how the, the work of this group has progressed. Again, each building is so, it's pretty drastically different in most cases, but in terms of equipment and those, those pieces as well. So in terms of our next step, the group has been, again, creating those guiding principles. We just met today about our other six buildings that will occur next year. And so they're right now in the, at the step of thinking about color selection and finalizing those pieces. Again, as this moves ahead. So there's a lot of enthusiasm around this project. And it's exciting, again, to my favorite part was just being able to incorporate the student voice in this as well.
Okay. So we're being asked to purchase playground equipment for six of our 12 elementary schools. May I have a resolution, please? Dr. Philip Hart?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for playground...
Finished airplay. And status, IP address, 10 dot 103 dot 8 dot. Settings, accessibility, notification, user general, button, one of 11. This Apple TV is supervised and the school district can monitor the internet traffic on this device. Go to accessibility and...
Just don't push anything.
Just, yeah, tell her to go to sleep.
Don't touch anything.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have a resolution.
Take two.
Yeah, resolution by Dr. Philip Hart.
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for playground equipment and installation be awarded as follows and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund. Sinclair Recreation slash Game Time for Playground Equipment Contractor 1, bringing the amount of $1,508,996.70. And then Midstate Recreation slash Play World Playground Equipment Contractor Number Two, in the amount of $1,183,777.90 for the total of $2,692,774.60.
Support? Resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Mr. Hoff. Any questions or comments on this?
We will be fully ADA compliant with this large purchase.
Yes.
Thank you.
So to be clear, yeah, that means all the playgrounds will be accessible, fully accessible. Is that correct? Thank you. Dr. Philip Hart?
You know, as you talked about student voice, did you have students that had physical challenges as part of that voice? So were we well represented in terms of all students in that process?
Absolutely. We, I think one of the, one of my biggest takeaways from just kind of observing those conversations was that students were able to work with the media specialists and do some learning about what, to use your example, what accessibility meant and that it's not maybe just a piece.
Screen saver.
It's not maybe just a piece of equipment that we're purchasing, but it's a way that kids are able to socialize and actually be included, you know, in social play. And so I just thought that was a really important takeaway as part of the group. You know, just again, the learning and students were thinking and doing some learning around how that's not meant to, their intention not just to be overly supporting students with different needs and things. Some of the other things the group and the committee thought about was things about what inclusivity means. And so for instance, that had a lot to do with things like the surface. For instance, students that have a earpiece can't use metal slides because, you know, just different ways that you're looking at accessibility was a huge piece of learning for the students. And we included all students. A lot of personal conversations with specific students that, you know, what do you think of this or that? Again, these are enhancements, so it's not kind of this big overhaul of the, of that work. But I think that as that learning continues, that inclusivity will continue to be, you know, at the top of mind. That's why it came forward as one of our guiding principles. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Aney?
So when you said for each building, each of these six buildings, if, correct me if my understanding isn't correct.
Sure.
They have a group, a team, which includes students, teachers, as well as some parents in the group. And the leader of that school probably created that and then they worked together to come up with the list. Is that my...
We actually have a district team that has...
Oh, district team.
Yes. And then at the local level, it's exactly how we had described. So the principals sort of informally meeting with parents, meeting with students and some of the teacher leaders. We asked, for instance, in some cases, some of the PE leaders and some of our special educators to be on those teams that are really using those. We had some career professionals involved in those conversations. Just, and again, as we develop those conversations, we'll, we'll be continually, you know, sustained over time because it's not just going to be, you know, it'll, we'll have that learning occur as time goes on too.
Dr. Wilson?
I was just going to say, I went on a building visit in the spring and all the like prototypes that the kids had made were on display. And listening to kids talk about like how proud they were of their prototypes, but then the building leaders talking about how impressed they were that the kids cared about like ADA and accessibility. Like the kids were holding the adults accountable for that.
Another piece of that, Dr. Wilson, was the students being able to interact with some of the architects as they did all the building tours and they looked at the pieces of equipment that they sort of did an inventory of things that were, we were able to keep and things that were able to, ready to be disposed of. And so that interaction was really interesting to observe as well. Landscape artists and things like that came out to interact with our students. So they did a lot of learning with that.
Good. Other questions? Ms. Alish?
So the six of the elementary buildings are getting the playgrounds this year. Six are getting the new furniture and then next year the plan is to, to switch.
Exactly.
Good. And then, Mr. West, you should probably clarify, we'll have another vote on this, correct? This is the equipment and then we have another vote for installation, is that correct?
Yes, there's some site work.
Or site work. So we'll be, we'll be seeing that site work bid?
I believe in February, February, March.
Okay, okay, good. And then I just want to clarify, when you talked about the over 500 stakeholders were engaged. Can you, what are the stakeholder groups? Who's, who's in that stakeholder group?
Primarily parents.
Primarily parents?
Yep.
And what form did that feedback take?
That was in forms, Microsoft forms. We took that as a survey and just made that, we just asked specifically about what were their main, you know, topics in terms of, we're happy to share that too with the Board of Education.
But so, so in the stakeholder group, the 500 were all parents?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes.
11C, consideration for the athletic complex upgrade. ARFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for athletic facility renovation work at Athens and Troy High Schools. Bid responses were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Maintenance and Operations, burnt mallow builders, and it's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. A little bit of a preface here, this is quite a large project. This is the complete renovation of the outdoor athletic facilities at Troy High. And then we have incrementally went about the Athens facilities because of the new, new build over there that's scheduled in the coming years. So we have to be methodical and strategic about what we're doing over there. Right now, we're moving forward with auxiliary field and the tennis courts in this package. But other than that, it's focused at Troy High deliberately. This is the new baseball fields, new varsity baseball and softball fields will be turf, redoing the entire complex to make it more of an athletic complex throughout the site. There's quite a bit of, quite a bit of earth moving and drainage that's going to go along with this project. But we will also have another auxiliary field that will be used for our transition times at Smith Middle School as well as we're going to start constructing that building and they'll have access, their outdoor athletic teams will have some access to the site as well. So we are very excited. This is one of the first four projects, along with the playgrounds, furniture in Smith Middle School. The athletic complex was, was coming right off, out of the bat too. So we are excited about it and let's kind of just give a context of what you're approving tonight.
Okay, we're being asked to approve a resolution to fund the new athletic complex upgrade. Resolution, please. Ms. Aney?
Be therefore resolved that the bid for the high school athletic renovations be awarded as follows and that this amount, amount be approved as an expenditure of this building site and sinking fund and 2023 Capital Projects Fund. Cortez Brothers Trucking and Excavating Site Work for $8,505,700. City Contract Services Architectural, $518,000. Contrast Mechanical Inc. for mechanical work, $182,000. Innovative Energy Controls for electrical work, $543,810. Shawn Integrated and Turf Solutions Inc. for synthetic turf for $2,292,305 with a contingency of $963,345 totaling to $13,516.
Support? Thank you. Resolution by Ms. Aney, supported by Dr. Wilson. Are there any questions or comments on this? Dr. Wilson?
Just for clarity, this will address flooding issues that we have had there?
Yes.
That's what I mean, I just...
At both schools.
Well, this part of Athens doesn't flood. This is...
Oh, the auxiliary.
The auxiliary field at Athens doesn't flood. This is to address the baseball field flooding at Troy High.
All of the problems with site drainage.
Hence the significant first contractor.
Right, well, that's what I just, when people see this dollar amount, anyone who's been over there knows how bad it floods. So just want to clarify, this will address flooding.
It is our expectation that that's part of the scope.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Alish?
And then the, the part of the work that's being done at Troy High, this also includes the part of that athletic complex, the new buildings for storage and bathrooms.
Correct. There will be, there will be a storage facility as well as additional bathrooms out near the baseball complex. So that will service anybody who's been out there for a game. That will service, service the community well.
Mr. Hoff?
I got one other, for a timeline on this so the general public has an idea of where we're headed on this.
Timeline is we want to get the, get it started as quickly as possible. We are going to hold our spring seasons, so most of the work will start after, after our baseball and softball season this spring. So May, May timeframe. If there's areas of opportunity that aren't going to be as affected by spring athletics, we will, we will try to move those timelines up.
And what about at Athens?
Athens, we are getting started upon completion, or upon approval. Tonight, there's some expectation that we might be able to get that auxiliary field started here in February.
Okay. Any other questions? I just will make a comment that we've all seen the plans. We've gone through a lot of detail on this and it, we're really excited about it. I mean, I think everybody here sees this as fixing some major problems that we've had over at Troy, especially Troy High. So thank you for putting this together. All those in favor?
I think, and I apologize, I think it is worth noting, we started with some Athens design work. Okay, we did start with some Athens preliminary design work enough where we are just, I want to be transparent here. We are going to really look at the tennis court. One of the questions that have been asked continuously is, are we making sure our investments today are affected?
Right.
Tomorrow. There's, there's some design capabilities that we need to really look at the tennis court project. It's being approved tonight. We recommend it being approved tonight. But there's potential that we might need to re-discuss that opportunity as it relates to the location of those courts.
She might actually end up relocating the tennis courts.
Possibly. I just, I think it's worthy of noting here, so the board is, is aware of that. Approval is necessary right now to move it along, but it's going to take a second look. That's hot off the press this week, so we want to make sure that you guys, you guys are aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Oh, no, we've got more questions now.
One question regarding that. So can I just get a clarification for Athens? We're just talking about the auxiliary, the second soccer field that we are doing.
We're talking about the auxiliary field and within this proposal is the tennis courts. We are recommending to move forward with those, but I'm just cautioning the board and Dr. Macheski. Ms. De Palato and I are, are taking a hard look at, at some preliminary designs as it relates to the location of the tennis courts. And I think it's worthy of, of the board knowing that we are taking that second look. You're approving these, but we may be having further discussions.
So we get new tennis courts, but they may not be in the same place. That's, yeah.
You're going to hold off on that once the, the discussion is done with the architecture of the new basement?
Correct.
And Dr. Wilson?
I thought this also included stadium turf for Athens because that's not moving. Is that a different project?
That'll be, that's a different project and that will be forthcoming.
Yeah, soon. It's coming soon.
Building site and sinking fund, I believe, on that one.
It is building site and sinking fund, but I'm wondering if we already approved it. Maybe not. Okay.
Yeah.
They're all running together right now, but...
I know, for us too.
It'll be coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your clarity.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. All right, 11D.
11D may be less interesting, but equally as important. ARFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for the district's fiber cabling maintenance. The bids were reviewed by Beth Sogs, Director of Technology, and John Foster, Convergent Technology Partners. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below.
Okay, thank you. We're being asked to approve a new contract for fiber maintenance. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that fiber maintenance services be awarded to Fiber Link Inc. consistent with their submitted proposal to bid number 2324-05 and that the expenditures related to fiber maintenance be approved as an expenditure of, of the general fund.
Thank you. Resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Mr. Hoff. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing, we're, we're not interested in this? Is that... Yeah, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. We have a new fiber contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. All right, now we move to public communication of non-agenda items. We have Mr. Jason Chikowicz. Good evening. Nice to see you. Hi. We're going to try to get this, can you be our guinea pig and we can get this thing to work? Because it didn't work last time. Okay. Is it going?
It is. Yep.
Sorry, we'll let you go over a couple of seconds. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jason Chikowicz and I am the proud president of the Troy Education Association. I am here to call attention to a concerning situation taking place in the Troy School District. I am here to discuss the teacher contract that is set to expire on Wednesday, January 31st, 2024. Starting on Thursday, February 1st, all Troy teachers will be working without a contract. Just the thought of working without a contract for Troy teachers has caused angst, anxiety and frustration. Most of all, your Troy teachers feel disrespected by the district. It's unfortunate that we find ourselves in this situation. This year, the Troy School District received historic funding increases and the Troy School District has the second highest fund equity in Oakland County, yet here we are. In fact, in regard to funding, Governor Whitmer said, "Every Michigan child deserves a chance to pursue their potential and build a bright future. This historic education budget will make that possible." Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist went further to say, "This historic education budget reaffirms and strengthens our investments in students, educators and families." Given the historic income received by the district and the large amount of money the district has chosen to stockpile away in its savings account, the question I have for the Troy School Board is, what investment will have the biggest impact on student success? The answer is simple, Troy teachers. Troy teachers are the linchpin in making Troy a destination district. We are a people organization. We need to recruit and retain talented teachers to ensure we remain the best of the best. Having said that, the Troy School District is no longer professionally competitive compared to many surrounding districts. We have fallen behind our competition. Many Troy teachers are leaving our district in pursuit of higher professional growth elsewhere. Additionally, many talented new teachers are choosing to pursue careers in surrounding districts that offer higher starting, starting compensation packages, like Novi Community Schools, that offers a starting salary that is $9,608 higher than Troy's. I guess you could say, Novi is truly pursuing a world-class agenda. Our talented Troy teacher pool is dwindling. We are losing our ability to recruit and retain talented Troy teachers. The Troy Education Association is ready to bargain a contract that will attract talent. We have offered many dates to bargain, but the board has only accepted a few of them. Let's get this contract settled. Troy teachers are committed to doing what is right. Troy teachers are committed to doing what is right for our learning community. Troy teachers are committed to doing what is best for our students. The real question is, are each of you?
Thank you.
All right, and that takes us to other. So I'm gonna move down to Dr. Philip Hart.
Dr. Philip Hart, do you have anything under other tonight?
No, just to say it's good to be, to be back and, you know, we have a large agenda of work in front of us and I think we're prepared, so.
Great. Mr. Hoff?
I have nothing.
Okay. Ms. Sunny? Ms. Alish?
Nothing at this time.
You sure? It sounds like you have something. Go ahead, it's okay.
It was earlier discussion too about, about snow days and things like that, but that we can, we can talk about that. I think it would be with, today there was, you know, an earlier warning to, to parents. I think it would be good to, to understand, you know, whether and what kind of very fixed parameters we have. You know, this morning it didn't really seem that bad. Parents received notification last night really late. So I, I think it would be, as a, as a parent, it would be good to understand what parameters we use going forward, so, so they might be able to better predict. So that's it.
Okay.
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Wilson?
I know we're gonna do the MLK recognition next month, but I do wanna just really give a shout out to all of the kids who worked really hard yesterday to get that organized. It was a beautiful day and I really, I really am excited about the Student Equity Council. Seeing that kicked off yesterday, I'm just really grateful for Chantel and her work. It was beautiful to see that, like, kids advocated for something, they went to administration, administration really empowered them, and so to see the, the kids' passion for what that Student Equity Council is gonna do is really exciting and I'm, I'm just really excited to see that move forward. It was beautiful to see that launch yesterday, so I will actually be able to tell that to students next month.
The people who put on the work, right?
Knowing that we broadcast these meetings, I just wanted to, to give a shout out and to, to really say that I'm excited about the, the way that the students are leading that work in the district.
Great. Dr. Macheski?
Nothing except just to reiterate, thank you, Dr. Wilson. Everyone that came out yesterday to celebrate, to, to work as part of the, the day of service, I think the turnout may have been a little bit lighter than we had prior, but some of that I'm sure had to do with the weather. But the spirit certainly.
Yeah, the Lions the night before.
The Lions game.
Yeah.
It was, the spirit certainly was there and the folks that were there were, I think, really appreciative of the amount of time and effort that went into preparing for that, for that event. And again, a huge thanks. I know we'll have a chance to, to celebrate the students that were involved, but a huge thanks to all of those individuals that came out and, and really made that a, a special day. So thank you.
Thank you. And the only thing I have is I was gonna shout out to the SAB because the, those kids are phenomenal. When you come in, they practically cheering people into the building in the morning and that was, it was really fun to see what a good job they did across that. So it was nice to have all the dignitaries there. We had our U.S. Senator there, so that was, that was really fun. It's a great showcase for, for service and for the district, so. Okay, I need our dates because I never remember them. So it's February?
Six.
Sixth is the workshop at, over at the central office and then?
February 27th.
February 27th. We're a little bit later because of midwinter break. So February 27th, back here at seven o'clock, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And with that, class dismissed. We'll adjourn for the night. Thank you.
Thank you.